Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Voice of Authority webinar brought to you today by JLL. My name is Toby Fox, I'm the Managing Director at Three Fox, the marketing agency for councils. And our job, as you perhaps know by now, is to keep our network of councils and developers, and investors and their influencers and advisors connected. And one of the ways that we continue to do that is through this online channel, The Voice of Authority, which is a platform for councils to discuss their ambitions and challenges, and influences, and issues of urgency. And on that note, since 2015, my company Three Fox has been producing workshops and seminars, and publications, encouraging councils to grow their own capacity to deliver new homes. Now, only 10 councils are not actively engaged in directly delivering new homes. And we want to shine a light on best practice and encourage knowledge sharing to continue that growth. So to help with that, we set up the Direct Delivery Awards, which took place in May this year for the first time. And B1st, the company established by the London Borough of Barking and Dagenham, won the inaugural Direct Delivery Team of the Year Award. And we'll be interviewing them on the 1st of December. And details of that session will go into the chat shortly. But today, we're going to meet the other inaugural winners, the rising stars of direct delivery, Oxford City Council and OX Place, who are building a substantial delivery programme using an array of delivery tools, including directly through HRA, through their own housing company, and in joint ventures with Hill and with Grosvenor, with Nuffield College and Catalyst, and Barton Homes. And there's also a procurement framework for modern methods of construction to provide 2,500 homes across Oxfordshire. Now, we're going to hear more details about that programme today, and how the team set it up, and how it's sustaining it, and the role of collaboration, and how it's adapted to changing resource needs as it matures, among many other things. To answer those questions, it's a delight to welcome to the Voice of Authority Helen Horn, who is Managing Director at OX Place, and Dave Scholes, who is Affordable Housing Supply Corporate Lead at Oxford City Council. Welcome both. And to quiz Helen and Dave, it's a pleasure to invite to join us three of our Direct Delivery Awards judges, Mike Diath, who's Partner at HTA Design, Anthony Lewis, Director at Tile Hill Executive Recruitment, and Professor Janice Morfit, who's Visiting Professor at the Bartlett School of Planning at UCL. Now, make the most of the expertise assembled on your screens, viewers, by firing in your questions through the Q&amp;A function, and we'll address as many of those as we can during the course of the conversation. And we welcome your observations in the chat also. And we've got a few questions for you via the online survey function. And you can contribute to the discussion by answering those as they pop up onto your screens over the next hour. Let's kick off the conversation in the meantime. I'm going to turn to Dave first. Dave, if you could set the scene and describe the scale and timeline of your programme for us.
Yeah, no problem. Yeah, I've got a couple of slides that we can probably use just to set the scene a little bit for Oxford. I mean, Oxford's probably the first thing to say is it's a very small city. We probably punch above our weight sometimes, not least in terms of the reputation of the city with the university and etcetera. But it is quite a challenge. It's a very constrained city. The university has its pluses, but it takes up a lot of city centre land, a great deal of heritage issues in the city as well. We're small partly because we're surrounded by Green Belt, which is lovely, but a development challenge in the same token. And we've got a lovely river flowing through Oxford, which is also beautiful, but we've got massive floodplains, so quite a lot of the city is undevelopable in that sense. I think the underlying message there is we've got very limited land supply. We've not had a great deal of new build over certainly recent decades, and that's created a backlog of demand. The Strategic Housing Market Assessment we did a few years ago tried to assess that demand as 28,000 new homes needed, which when you compare that to the size of Oxford, a population of about 150,000, 55,000 homes, is obviously massively significant. And that's rising at over 1,000 a year, which indicates how we're not meeting that need. One metric we sort of use to show that is how many people are on the housing register. I don't think it's a particularly good one anymore, because you'll see the disparity on the slide between 3,000 people on the register just being the tip of the iceberg in terms of housing need. Lots of people sitting behind that, that not only need rented accommodation, but just can't afford to get on the property ladder or any other form of housing. So very high levels of homelessness associated with that. On the screen, I've got one of the more shocking statistics around Oxford, which is a third of the children within the city living below the poverty line. So it's a definite city of, you know, two halves. So I think the often quoted disparity in the city is between the richest ward and the poorest ward. Life expectancy differing by about 14 years. When you consider the scale of Oxford, is those two wards are less than five miles apart, it's quite significant. But the lack of affordability of housing in the city has a lot of impacts. One of those is a lot of people that work in Oxford can't afford to live in Oxford anymore. So for a small historic city, one of the massive challenges beyond housing is actually around travel and transport. So a lot of people trying to commute into the city and generally getting stuck in traffic jams most days, that takes up an extraordinary amount of time. You know, that in itself has got all sorts of issues around recruitment and retention for the local economy as well. Probably a strange light picture to open a presentation on housing with, but the picture on the slide that you're seeing is the plans for Oxford Train Station, which is about to start a major refit with a new platform going in. That's really, I've put it in because it ties into a lot of the infrastructure investment that we're putting into the city. So although visitors to the city will see a shiny new train station, what it's actually doing is it's providing a new passenger line round to the east of the city, which will open up strategic other sites and effectively allow some of our residents in the biggest estates to more or less commute throughout the Inter London on the train. So that's an investment over the next five years. In case you missed it, Oxford Needs Homes is our campaigning slogan. So that's big and bold, front and centre. And we've got some website support around that, which is really trying to change the narrative around needing homes in the city. Again, one of our challenges, despite everything you're seeing on that slide in terms of us needing more homes, we do get a lot of objections for every time we try and build. So partly that's because we've, a lot of our sites are small, difficult infill brownfield sites with neighbours. But we have a number of people, usually people that are living in houses already, complaining about the properties we're trying to build. So there's a big campaigning push from us and trying to give a bit of a voice to the people that don't have access to housing, which are often much more silent than the people that don't want housing. So yeah, I think on the next slide is just showing a map of the city. If you don't know it, that's on the left. And the red markers on that are showing our sites. So it really just echoes the point I made a minute ago in that we don't have many large strategic sites. A lot of the sites are quite small, scattered around the city. An average development site for us is probably around 25 units at the moment, something like that. So, you know, which gives rise to loads of viability challenges. Jumping to the plan on the right, that's the surrounding area of Oxfordshire, showing our four neighbouring councils as well. So having limited land supply in the city pushes us out in terms of trying to meet some of that unmet need into the districts. And there are a different nature of sites once you leave the city boundary, which is that constrained sort of funny shaped circle in the middle, that we're then looking at more strategic sites on the edge of the city that we'd hope deliver, well, just over 7,000 affordable homes over the next 10 years essentially. Moving on to the next slide, if that's possible. The, hopefully, from what I've said already, you can see this will be the overriding priority for the council is delivering more for the housing. In terms of our corporate priorities, it's one of four. We've got one around a thriving economy, sorry, an inclusive economy, thriving communities, and a sustainable city, which is the green agenda and no carbon. But housing is first and foremost in a lot of that. And I think we've been very lucky in some senses that has been driven by consistent member support for corporate level, for delivering affordable housing and making sure that we maintain an affordable housing supply. When we say affordable in the city as well, it does cover all the different tenure types. But the big push, particularly from our members, is always with social rent. And that's been the case for years. So to try and make housing as affordable as possible. And we've had, yeah, because of that corporate support, I think we've had policy alignment over the years. So our local plan pushes very heavily, probably more so than other councils for affordable housing. We've got a planning ask of at least 50% of all sites larger than 10 units to be affordable. And as I say, when we're looking at those affordable tenures, we're asking for 80% of the affordable to be at social rent. So that's quite a large ask from developers, really. I think we're quite involved in looking for sites and working with the planners in terms of trying to develop a five-year land supply, not always easy. And that's diminishing in the city at the moment, hence the need to broaden our horizons essentially and go further. But the approach we've taken is really to try and get affordable housing by any means delivered. And so the graph here is a bit of our journey in that. And as you'll see, it's a bit of a rollercoaster. We've obviously been relying on a consistent RP programme. Well, I say consistent, but an RP programme, it's had its rises and falls. And that's in some senses dependent on the market, availability of sites, developer activity sometimes, if we're looking at 106 deals. But the council historically has tried to deliver affordable housing. We've got our HRA, about just under 8,000 homes within council stock. And we, along with every other council, we understood the self-financing in 2012. You'll see the impact of that self-financing really, and our ability to borrow back three years later, coming through in a delivery programme in 2015, 16. So we were on an upward trend. We then had the budget of June 2015 that put a lot more policy constraints on us, including the rent cap or the CPI minus one, which essentially destroyed the business plan that we were working to at the time within the council. That was one of the motivations for setting up our housing company, was to try and ensure direct delivery regardless of what policy risks might come through. Company was set up in 2016, and again, you can see an upward trajectory really since that. If you combine it, it's probably a bit irrelevant actually whether you're seeing blue or dark orange. But if you combine those two, that's just reflecting a slightly different stockholding. But it's within the council group, those two colours are indicating our programme going forward. And I wasn't clever enough on the graph to stick a dotted line beyond these years. But our target for the affordable homes is 1,600 new homes over the next four years, of which we want 850 to be at social rent. So deliberately trying to set a four-year target, rather than being very in-year cyclical, which is a challenge, I think, for new build always. It always annoys me if we're pushing for a delivery in year, and we've got a March delivery date that slips by a couple of weeks and pushes us into April, and we've missed the year. So we're trying to do a more of a four-year cycle. If you averaged it out, it'd be about 400 homes a year. But it doesn't quite go as evenly as that. But that's the ambition that we're currently working to. And the focus there is all on direct delivery, but recognising we can't do it alone, and we need to work in partnership with others. So we've got some joint ventures also in the mix with housing associations. We've got one with a college, and we've got one with a developer. And we're pushing a variety, anything that will deliver affordable housing. We've got a work stream around community-led housing as well. It's not developed a scheme yet, but that's one of the many tools in the box really that we're trying to work to.
That's fantastic, Dave. Thank you very much indeed. That's really set the scene very concisely for us. Helen, how did you go about addressing all of this need? Talk us through the setup of the organisation.
Yeah, so as Dave said, the company was set up in 2016. I think the really important element of it is how our board was established. We have a very diverse and inclusive board that have been there since the inception. And so we are driven by a strong chair there, and also very strong member leadership that's consistent. The message here about Oxford Needs Homes, we're starting to transfer that into Oxford's Getting Homes. So this photo here is just a montage of what we have been delivering. The OX Place relates to the postcode. We can deliver over the whole of Oxfordshire. But as Dave said, we're concentrating on city centre. Most of our land comes directly from the council. And as Dave said, we've got two very large schemes coming up in our programme, but they're mostly much smaller sites. So it's really important that we get the density of these sites right, especially with MMC and how to get volumetric into certain sites. We also have amazing height constraints because of the heritage around the city and viewing cones. So we have to be really clever with our design a lot of the time. The three schemes that are on here actually have won awards from Oxford Preservation Trust, which was just last week, and we're really proud of that because it's a recognition of we are considering the legacy that we're leaving and the heritage of the city. If we move on to the next slide, because I've just got some pretty pictures, because Dave set the scene so well. We are concentrating on affordable homes. OX Place has three objectives: delivering affordable homes, and as Dave said, that's all tenures. We do deliver a fair proportion of shared ownership, and these go really well in Oxford, which just again shows that we've got a diverse population, that we need to provide a diverse tenure to address all of those needs in the right places. Sustainability is also a key element and one of our primary objectives. So we are moving on a fabric-first approach, really working towards carbon reduction, and also making it so that the residents are going to benefit from this sustainability. We're starting a programme to record the heating costs so that we can adapt and move forward and learn. And we want to learn from other partners and deliverers as well. And the final one is returning a profit back to the local authority. And that's in terms of a dividend, using council services, and also the structure of our borrowing. Dave mentioned that we are a group. So OX Place is made up of a development company and an investment company. And the council also owns Oxford Direct Services, which provides the maintenance for the homes that we hold within the investment company. And it's really important that we operate as a family group so that we are keeping the profit and the resources within Oxford. The schemes that we're developing on these dense sites, it's really important that the design is landscape-led. I think we learnt a lot from lockdown about the importance of nature in our everyday life. We want to make sure that the new communities that we're building relate to the existing communities so that there's no them and us, and the connectivity is maintained. The transport networks, car clubs, really making sure that they're embedded into the design of the schemes. Dave hasn't mentioned much about Regen, but that's also on the agenda, not so much about OX Place, but about how we can make the city grow in the most efficient way. And place-making is absolutely key to that with some of the major developments that Oxford is doing around the railway station, Oxpens, which is developing a city centre location, but also linking up to the river and the wider retail and research elements in the city. So OX Place are definitely focusing on housing, sustainable housing that is comfortable and beautiful for people to live in, to give the residents the best start. If we can have some flexibility in that design, cohousing is quite popular in the city. But can we make these homes flexible for people to grow into without having to change their communities? So yeah, that's kind of like how OX Place is happening.
Thank you, Helen. That's terrific. There's a lot on the agenda. It's a really substantial programme. And thanks very much for setting it out for us. And what we've got to do now is find out what made you winners, because you were up against some really tough competition for the Rising Stars Award. So I've worked out my technical gremlins, and I'm going to relaunch the first of our polls so we can get a feel for who's out there in the audience and what their experience of direct delivery is. And while that's happening, I'm going to hand over to Mike, because Mike, you've got a set of questions as well, haven't you?
I have indeed. So Dave and Helen, it's really been great to hear again your achievements. I would commend everybody actually on the listening in to look at your website and view your many short videos, which I think have been really instructive actually in terms of your objectives, but actually how you're communicating those. And actually, the diversity of what you've actually delivered in terms of design quality. I think that as an architect, you'll understand that design is always going to be at my forefront of thinking when I look at housing. What I was interested in is you're doing a number of different sites, sort of similar timescales. And I was wondering how you transfer what works and what doesn't work between those schemes to make sure that you're on the continuous improvement in terms of what you're delivering.
Yeah, if I come back with that one, as many programmes, we're working in tranches. And we do a lot of community engagement, getting involved with the local community really early, and making sure our brief is very clear to architects. The lessons learned, you can pick up quite quickly what's working, what isn't, from other partners. So we do 360-degree reviews. We work very closely with the council teams as well. So in terms of incomes, in the income team and the allocation team, what residents like, what they don't like. Also with the community team, so we have a really strong localities team. And so when we handed over one recently at Callan's Court, we invited the local community round who were part of the initial consultation. And what do you think now that it's actually been built? What do you like, what you don't like? And so you can quite quickly pick up on what works for people. But also, I think, taking on board what came after lockdown and having that 15-minute community, building that community, which is people, community isn't bricks and mortar. It's about how people interact with each other and giving them the space to allow them to do that, but also having some privacy. And I think that also being that landscaped-led, using the resources that we have in the city. Dave's mentioned about the Green Belt, making sure that we've got that connectivity there, and also respecting the heritage of the city.
Yeah, I could come in. I think my background is actually in more the allocations and housing needs side of the business. So I've moved from that much more into supply. But one of the key things for me is keeping those links back into housing really. So certainly the allocations team that are trying to let the finished product always get feedback from people, positive and negative, and across our other teams in terms of landlord services and how we're managing the properties and the property teams and how we're repairing them. You know, very good channels of communication. So I think our schemes in the latest programme, we're planning some formal customer feedback at the end of the defects period, so that'll be a few months hence for the first schemes delivered. But ahead of that, we can all get feedback on previous schemes and what's worked well, what hasn't worked well. I think a couple of things that often get missed is things like service charges and making sure that we're designing schemes that have very low service charges and they're not going to be exorbitant later on. Obviously, the whole issue around energy efficiency is moving really fast as well. So we've probably all got horror stories of the first time we put S or C pumps into a scheme and how they didn't really achieve the objectives. But learning from that and building on the technology available and making sure that goes in. From the council side, we've now got Energy Efficiency Officers that will visit all our first-time tenants twice within the first month of moving in, just to make sure that, well, one, that they're getting a really good energy deal, and two, that they're not flicking a variety of switches on any fancy new devices that is turning immersions on and sending bills sky-high. So I think that's quite important as well.
All right, thanks, Dave. Back to you, Mike.
Yeah, what I'll do is I'm going to combine two questions into one to keep to my timescale. And I'm actually going to follow it up with another thought. So MMC, obviously, so feedback and that continuous improvement is embodied in certainly how we think about MMC at HTA. And as architects, it's really important to get that post-occupancy evaluation and feedback into the loop. And I'm really pleased, and we were really pleased to see your commitment to MMC and of course, the wider framework that the council have. So I wondered how you've made use of it and what is the learning that you have? And then supplementary to that is, are you collaborating with other local authorities who are also thinking about MMC to conjoin on the journey really, and the lessons learned to make sure that we're not making the same mistakes in 330 local authorities up and down the country?
Yeah, I'll come back on that one. So our framework, I'm really proud of that. I wasn't the one that came up with the idea of it, but got it into delivery mode. So the framework was set up really because we had difficulty attracting contractors to Oxford. They would go and work in London or Birmingham, and it would be easier, not quite as constrained, and make more money. But the framework for us was to attract contractors. So we've got this fantastic programme, we've got this ambition, come and help us to deliver that. It also improves the cost certainty for us. And the sustainable housing deliveries is absolutely key. And we are not experts. The volume that we build at is not the volume that a major house builder will. And so they have so many more lessons and experiences that we can learn from. So we have seven contractors on our framework, which are Equan, Barrett, Hill, Geoffrey Osborne, Felton, which is local, Impact Modular, and Build Eco. So we've got delivery partners that do everything from full volumetric all the way through SIPs and timber frame. So we can be really adaptable for what each site requires. And I think that with MMC, you have to be really careful about the right, the right modern method of construction for the right site. So we are definitely looking for those partners to learn lessons from them. We're just starting to deliver through the framework. And the really important thing for us is to get the contractors on board really early. Don't make the mistakes of designing a home that works for traditional construction. You need to design it for MMC and making sure that we have that experience on board around the table really early. Collaborating with other local authorities, yeah, we'd love to do more of that. And we, obviously, our framework is open to other local authorities if they want to use the same contractors and learn from our experiences and learn from those contractors. But I think it's a really collaborative sector, and I really enjoyed networking with lots of other devcos. And I think that if we can get that progressing more through these kind of webinars or networking events, it is so collaborative, and we're not really in competition with each other. And so it's really important that we do share those knowledge. And I'm a huge fan of Janice's research and love that the local authorities have set up these housing companies that really focus on the need of that local authority. So ours is really focusing on affordable housing, but others might be looking at commercial. And the MMC in Oxford isn't just residential, education, the colleges are using it for education facilities and student accommodation. And labs is a great way of including MMC that can add and subtract as the demand's needed. So it's a really exciting place to be in at the moment.
That's brilliant stuff, Helen. That's brilliant stuff, Helen. Thank you very much indeed. And we're going to hand over to the much admired Professor Morfit in a second. I just, I just want to come, there's some great questions coming in from the viewers and Emma Osmondson, who's just moving from, again, the much admired Exeter City living into Waterford, sixty bricks, I think she's taking over. She's asking about how you managed to get viability to stack up when you've got so much social rent in your, in your formula.
It's a very good question. It's a constant challenge for us. I think it's fair to say, you know, as Helen's alluded to, we've got sort of nearly competing aims in terms of the company. You know, we want a scheme to be viable and to make a small dividend for the, you know, modest dividend for the company. We want affordable homes and we want them to a really high quality spec that's sustainable. So yeah, it's one of our biggest challenges, particularly in the current environment, you know, where we've got a lot of inflationary pressures going on. We, Helen's mentioned that a lot of the land to date has been council land. So one thing we're able to do is, is, is to, you know, reflect the, reflect our wishes in the land price essentially. We're relatively good at looking for sources of subsidy and funding. And we, you know, we, we've got a fairly generous financial appraisal in terms of the buybacks into our own housing stock. So, you know, there is a commitment from the council to do this. And essentially, you know, make some hard choices in terms of balancing our priorities and, you know, and investment on existing stock. And with, you know, with new build. So there's, there's many, many things that play in that, but you know, at the moment we are, we are still just achieving viable delivery.
Thanks, Dave. Helen.
Yeah, Emma knows full well, because she's so experienced at this, that the, our three objectives of more affordable homes, sustainability and return back to profit. Return back to the council is, is a juggling act. And so you can't achieve everything on each individual site. So we very much take a programme approach. And taking that programme approach as well, O X Place isn't a developer that's looking for a quick win, a quick return. We have a forty year business plan. We intend to be here supporting the council and their objectives for that period. And so if it is sort of like a longer payback period or a smaller return initially, as long as that balance over the programmes, we're accepting of that. And also kind of like, there is that longevity of the company. And we're in it for the long haul. So it's not, it's not about a quick win. There's also cross subsidy. So we do do mixed tenure sites and we are selling on the open market. So we do realise that we can't build everything at social rent. But also Oxford's planning policies are very prescriptive about that. So we don't have that much flexibility. So it is sort of like looking at it on a scheme by scheme basis, but then taking a longer view over the programme.
Thanks, Helen. Mike, I know you want to come in, but we've got to move the conversation on shortly. So save, save that thought. I'm just going to launch another poll relating to what Dave was saying about changing circumstances. And while viewers respond to that, hand over at last to the patient, Professor Morfit.
Oh, well, hi. Thanks, Helen and Dave. It's what a great story we're hearing from you today. And thanks also to the feedback for the, for the survey. There'll be another one in January twenty twenty three. So hopefully we'll, we'll turn up some new information that will be helpful to everyone. What I'm really interested in hearing a bit about is, in a sense, what, what has motivated you to consider moving to all these various mechanisms and that you're using actually to deliver housing? Because if we think about other councils, you know, when I do the survey and we do the roundtables and we talk, I think a lot of councils appreciate the range of things they could do, as you're illustrating very well. But I think they're quite nervous. They perhaps wondering about, you know, the size of a team, how they recruit people. Councilors might be nervous and not sure about moving too far too quickly. I just wondered if you could just tell us a bit about your journey to that, those diversified methods that you're using. I mean, is it site related? Is it opportunistic in terms of partners coming to you? Just so other councils can kind of understand how they could move forward. So I think this, this often comes up when, when we talk in our roundtables. Thank you.
Shall I start with that one? I think, I think, I think it's all of those things actually that you mentioned, there is a sort of opportunistic element to some of it. In terms of, you know, what, what site might lend itself to what delivery model in some, some respects. But you, you, you know, when I put that, that graph up, it, it was very roller coaster like, you know. And actually, if we jump back maybe a decade before that, it was, it was still roller coasty, but at an even lower level. So I think, you know, as a council, we had this, this slight mismatch really between a sort of headline priority for delivering more affordable housing. And actually a pretty miserable programme of delivering it that, that we didn't always have control over. So some, you know, some years it would be, it would be famine and feast. Some years we'd have a sudden RP development that comes forward of, you know, a few hundred homes. Followed by the next year of next to nothing. So I think it was a sort of growing frustration that we're not really in control of that delivery and we do have some available land and let's try and use it over, over a programme ourselves. For me, when you sort of stand back and look at it, one of, one of the, probably the key things in that was appetite for risk. And I, I think sort of a lot of senior officers in the council managed to convince our members that, you know, the risk was worthwhile. And the rewards would be good. And, you know, in setting up a housing company and putting quite a large amount of front end investment into, into delivery, you have to, you know, you can put checks and safeguards, mitigations in place, but you do have to make that leap. And, and so you put the risk in, there's very large, you know, loans going on to the housing company. That, you know, the trajectory is good, but actual delivery to date is, you know, relatively modest. So it's, yeah, I think it's a leap of faith in some, some respects in terms of that. But Helen, I'm sure you, you've got a view.
Yeah, I think that it's really strong direction from, from members and senior management. I think it's also that we've grown organically. So the company kind of started as the housing development team, we moved to the company. And then as we've come across the challenges and they are external challenges as well. So the current sort of like economic condition, making sure that we are diverse and adaptable enough to respond to the housing need. So, you know, social housing, shared ownership is a great tenure. We're looking at, you know, potentially P R S, RP status, discounted market rent. To really sort of like get those people in the squeeze middle as well, that will never get a social rented house, but maybe in poor conditions in the private sector or can't afford to buy, get on the housing ladder. So I think that our, our growth and our diversity is responding to how the economy is changing as well, to make sure that we are addressing those housing needs, particularly within the city. I think working with partners is absolutely key. Dave said at the beginning, we can't do all of this by ourselves. And so the land supply as well, you know, can we work with other landowners to help to deliver that affordable housing? So, you know, our programme at the moment, you know, we've, we've got schemes and an extra hundred and fifty units for next year that have come from, from the private sector. And so we've got to be looking at, at sort of like expanding beyond where we are now. Otherwise, we're not going to be able to address that housing need.
Really every tool in the box, isn't it? As discussed, yeah. I'm just going to launch another poll where fifty percent of our viewers are revising their targets downwards as a result of economic circumstances. Let's find out what the biggest challenges they're facing are. And back to you, Janice.
Right, thanks. I mean, I think one of the things that would be really helpful, I think, for other councils is to hear what maybe one or two pieces of advice, if you can remember back when you were earlier in your journey. What have you learned? What wouldn't you do again? What do you think was really helpful? I'm certainly very taken by Dave's mention, I think frequently, and Helen's about the council's own land. And what we've found is that some councils are really on the case with that, but others only think that they can look at land that's held for housing. They're not really thinking more broadly about their ownership. I mean, what is it you think? Is it having the right team? How do you, how do you attract people? Is it about just working with partners? What, what advice would you give to a council that's perhaps back in your twenty sixteen or twenty eighteen selves? If you, if you could remember that, that, because councils will be at those points. And it might be helpful to hear what advice you could give them.
Yeah, it's a challenging, challenging question to cast the minds back. I think there, there was a point in probably twenty eighteen when the, the H R A Boeing cap was lifted and we'd set up the housing company. We were thinking, should, do we, do we still need the housing company? Or should we try and go it alone as a, as a council? I think quite quickly concluded that, you know, the national policy challenges that, that, that preceded that period could come back and a housing company was certainly the way to go. And obviously, you know, making a, making a dividend return to the council supported what, what we, we call within Oxford, just the, the Oxford model of, 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 you know, trying to trade our way out of budget cuts essentially. And, 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 you know, keep supporting local services with, with, you know, local, local housing companies. And Helen's mentioned our, our direct services as well. So it's taken a lot of commercial work there. One of the things that did sharpen up our delivery programme in that sort of twenty eighteen early, early period is always we, I know this won't be applicable to, to many areas, but we, we had a devolved housing deal in terms of funding, which is the Oxford Share Group deal. And, you know, where we had quite a modest delivery programme, all of a sudden we had a devolved delivery programme that was knocking on the door to fund us and look for schemes to, to make up that deal. And I think that very quickly meant that we, we bought board schemes and there was a sort of collective all council approach to, to looking at sites. You know, not, not only, not only sites, as you say, that are in, in the housing portfolio, but, you know, across commercial portfolio. You know, land that leisure doesn't need anymore or was, was costing us. And in a, in a couple of cases, land that belonged to the county council, we're two tier authority locally. You know, the county council has a probably a much tighter definition of, you know, the section one, two, three best, best consideration value than, than, than we do maybe. Would be my interpretation. But, you know, managing to secure sites from them off, off markets to contribute to the growth deal that they were signed up to was, you know, was also part of that, I think.
Great stuff. Thanks, Dave, for useful guidance. Helen, what, what are your top tips for other local authorities?
I, I think I have to say sort of like, everything is not rosy in the garden and we've made, we've made some mistakes as everybody does. I think it's really important to look at the resources that you've got. And that means, you know, the experience that you have within the, within the housing company. But also sort of like how you want to utilise them. So, you know, Dave says of like, our average site is about twenty five. We've done scheme for just like one house. And I think that looking back, that really wasn't sort of like the best use of resources. But you've got to start somewhere and you've got to have a bit of a practice. So, you know, there, there were definitely lessons learned from doing those smaller sort of like extensions or, or small building in a, in a big back garden. So I think that, you know, you, you've got to practise, you are going to make mistakes. It won't all be easy, but learn from those and really sort of like remember your core objectives and, and what you're trying to, to do out of this. And, and speak to each other, you know, we're, we're all in the same boat. And, you know, to have that conversations with other local authorities and dev codes is really important and just keep going at it.
And the worst that happens at the end of, of that so-called mistake is that you've got a house. Then it's a step forward rather than a step back, isn't it, Helen? But you, the, the question of resources has raised itself. So it's a great segue to, to hand over to Anthony, who's been waiting patiently to ask you about how you've been resourcing your, your programme. Anthony?
Yeah, thank you, Toby. And thanks to everyone so far. And I guess we as a business are obviously interested in it from, from the lens of talent, leadership. And I guess the relationship element of what leads to success in these environments. We, we love the idea of shining a spotlight on those councils and companies that are doing this really well. And we definitely know that it's not all rosy, as Helen's just said, and it's not an easy task. So I guess I'm going to combine two questions into one because conscious of time. And one's more geared at you, Helen, one for, for you, Dave. But Helen, I guess when you arrived at O X Place, what, what skill sets did you think were essential to have within the organisation and at board level? And how's that shifted over time, particularly within the current economic climate as you've moved towards delivery? And then for you, Dave, I guess what, what leadership do you think is required at board and M D level of a councils and arms length company to really work across that local authority relationship as a shareholder, but also the broader stakeholder environment that, that you operate within?
Yeah, let's, let's ask them in exactly that order, Helen.
Okay, so going on to Dave's a little bit, I think that having a good, strong board is, is really important. And having that direction and guidance and strategic view, don't get down into the, into the operational elements of things. And the team, I think because we're mostly delivering affordable housing, the team started off very sort of like council, local authority and RP led. But I think that as the economic climate is, is sort of worsening, I love the poll that came up before about national uncertainty, like how many prime ministers we had, sort of like, you know, you don't know what's happening tomorrow. So I think that that diverse, diversity within the company is really important to have that commercial aspect as well. So we're not just looking at it from one direction, we're able to, sorry, that's my dog, we're able to flip it round and, and look at it from a different direction to make sure that the company is sustainable moving forward. And that we are addressing that housing need. So you don't want an echo chamber, you don't want the same people, the, the same sort of like background of people. And we do have a really diverse and inclusive team with us. And it's also about working with the council. The culture within the local authority and within O X Place, so that we're not seen as the enemy, as an outsider. We are working as a group. Our objectives are the same as the council. So working with all those allocations, finance teams, maintenance teams is really important because it's not only our, our reputation of O X Place, it's the council's reputation. And we've seen that in some of the shared ownership sales that people have said, you know, they've bought from O X Place because we're backed by the council. And I think that that kind of reputation following through can be a real advantage for, for housing companies. So I hope that I've answered it sufficiently in that we're going for that diverse.
Helen, it seems, it seems that a lot of this is to do with setting that, that core objective. If everybody in the council understands that delivering new homes is, is a core priority for the entire local authority, then, then a lot of what you said sort of flows from that and your messaging is really clear. Now Oxford needs homes. It couldn't be any clearer and everyone can kind of buy into that. And Dave?
Yeah, I, I would just echo that really, I think, you know, diverse range of skills. I manage a much smaller client team that sits within the council. You know, I have the luxury of not having to be twin hatted, like some of my, some of my, my colleagues sort of around being on the board of the housing company, but for instance, also being the director of housing, you know, those sorts of challenges that we, we have to manage in governance terms. But I mean, my team is, is quite diverse. We, we have people from, you know, local authority and RP backgrounds and, and again, also private practice. So sort of quite merging, merging across the skill set now, which is, as Helen says, you know, having to be a lot more commercially minded, well, in fact, even, you know, I didn't think I would, with no bank lending rates as, as well as I, as well as I do when I started my housing career. So, you know, you, you adapt and change, don't you, in, in that respect? But yeah, we have ended up with, with, you know, slightly different outlooks between the two organisations, but a lot of collaboration and a lot of, you know, combined, combined skill sets really. I think as Helen mentioned earlier on the M M C example. Yeah, I think that's quite a good, a good example where we've had to adapt our, our coach, you know, we've probably, the, the company is designed to be a lot more free to foot in decision making, whereas the council, you know, has an element of bureaucracy and democracy involved. Can take longer to make certain decisions. You know, the, the traditional road might be, you know, we've, we've got a site, we secure planning consent and then we move to a tender stage and you know, progress the site very, very much in that vein. But, you know, as we move more into M M But, you know, as we move more into MMC style, I think there's a lot more around, you know, partnership, elements of trust that, you know, the, the, the company will, will design schemes and, and come back to us with, with proposals in, in a slightly different way to maybe what we envisaged, you know, two or three years ago.
Thanks, Dave. I'm going to come back round the panel in a second and ask each of you if there are any further observations or points you'd like to make about, about your views on why Oxford deserved to be the, the rising stars of direct delivery. But first, there's another question in from a viewer, Umar Akram, who's asking about Homes England. And I wonder about that. How, you talked about using a number of sort of sources of funding. How is your communication with Homes England being regarding grant funding? How have you managed to engage with them?
I haven't checked whether there's anyone from Homes England on the call, but I would just say that absolutely, our funders are absolutely brilliant. We're, we're actually only just opening conversations with Homes England really, in, in, in a meaningful way now, because we've had the devolved growth deal. So a lot of our early schemes were, were indirectly funded by, by Homes England, but, but through a, a local, a local team. Yeah, we're, we're now in the process of starting to put our first schemes into the, the HP programme. Obviously, it's, it's, it's really challenging in, in terms of, you know, your earlier question around viability is, is, is constant. And prices are inflating, you know, as we're, well, you know, every, every time we, we run a development scheme, the price of the price is going up at the moment. And, and, you know, we've got less flexibility in our, in our grant ask. But we are having those, those conversations with, with Homes England to see what we can do. Obviously, you know, I was going to say, just, just say in terms of one of our other challenges, you know, quite a watching brief on things like the rent cap at the moment. I mean, that will, that, that will make a much more substantial difference than, than marginal grant rates, I think, to schemes. So that's, that's quite a big risk item for us at the moment as well.
Yeah, in terms, in terms of risk, I, I believe I'm right in saying we're on our fifth housing minister of the year. So, so keeping a watch, a watching brief on changing requirements is a, is a full-time job. Helen?
No, I just wanted to come in about kind of like the, the grant rates. I think that obviously the central London has got the, the GLA and Homes England, I think, need to be much more aware of the, the unaffordability in different areas of the country. So Oxford was one of the most unaffordable places to live in the country. I think we just have taken over and it's not because we've done anything better. And Cambridge, who I understood came second in the rising star, there are obviously sort of like a lot of similarities and we do a, a lot of joint working with them. And understanding that we, we really do need higher grant rates because of how expensive it is to live in the city and the values that are here. And I think that that just needs to be sort of recognised within Homes England, that it's not one size fits all.
Thanks, Helen, and thanks, Umar, for the, for the question. Okay, Anthony, back, back to you for your sort of concluding points or, or any further observations or questions.
Yeah, thanks, Toby. And I suppose for me, it's just the absolute admiration for, for the ambition that both council and company have for, for driving forwards affordable housing delivery at a point in time where kind of the viability of that with land supply in Oxford is a challenge, but also the design and environmental standard that, that you're striving for. Yeah, I think it's great to see. And, yeah, we were really pleased to see the, the success of OX Place in the Direct Delivery Awards this year. So no, just nothing but admiration for you both and, and the teams around you.
Thanks, Anthony. Mike?
Yeah, keep going. I think, you know, it's fantastic to see you delivering. I would say that we now need to put our shoulders to the reality that incremental change in housing is not going to deliver the truly affordable homes we need at the scale we need them. And we're not at a tipping point yet, but we are probably getting closer to it by the year and Housing Minister. So I would ask that you use the lessons you learn to put your shoulder to the wheel or what you believe will be a paradigm shift in housing delivery. For me, that has to be about longer term planning and more collaboration between local authorities. But, but thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. But viewers, please join me in thanking the JLL Rising Stars of Direct Delivery. Helen Horn from OX Place and Dave Scholes from Oxford City Council. Thank you very much for sharing your, your experience with viewers today. And thank you also to our wonderful Direct Delivery Awards judges for their wisdom and insight. Thank you to Mike Dief from HTA Design. Thank you to Anthony Lewis from Tarlhill Executive Recruitment. And thank you to Professor Janice Morfitt from Bartlett School of Planning in your transition from one house to another. I hope the gremlins get sorted soon. And thanks also to JLL for sponsoring the award and, and this event. But most of all, always, viewers, thank you for tuning in and gracing us with your attention and fueling the conversations with your, your stimulating questions. Those ones that are left hanging, we'll put to the panel after this event and any email responses we'll post into the LinkedIn Members Club and we can keep the conversation going there. Now, we're going to be back soon on the first of December at 11am to interview B First, the Direct Delivery Team of the Year. And before that, next Tuesday at 1pm, you can tune into a one-to-one interview with councillor David Bartalucci, who's deputy leader and chair of the Housing Economy and Business Committee at the London Borough of Sutton. If you'd like to put a question to him, email me at toby@threefox.co.uk and details for registering to watch that interview and the session with B First are in the chat now. And obviously, you're all welcome and encouraged to attend the Direct Delivery Awards in May the 11th, 2023. This is all building up towards that. And you can find details for that both in the chat and at threefox.co.uk. And we'll be hosting a series of webinars early in the new year to talk through the, to meet the shortlist and, and talk through what they've achieved with our judges. But until then, from our fantastic panel and from JLL and from me and from everyone at Three Fox, thanks and good afternoon.